And welcome back. And as was mentioned earlier in the show, our first guest for this morning is the mayor of Belize City, Mayor Darryl Bradley. Good morning and thank you for being with me this morning.
Good morning and thank you always for giving us the opportunity.
Well, of course, we want to talk about the city council initiative that is coming up, your 12 Days of Charity, but since we have you here, it's a great opportunity to get an update on many other issues that the city council works on at this time. And I know the most recent issue that you've been addressing has been that of the zoning and updating certain areas in the city. So you held your consultations and let's just talk about that process itself.
Well, the city council over the last six weeks, we've held eight public consultations and various things, but I think a big topical area, Marlene, as you rightly point out, is the issue of zoning because it affects people so deeply. So that last week what we did is that we had a public consultation to speak about the Fort George Tourism Zone area. We have a task force comprised of members from the BTB and members from the Belize City Council. And of course, by way of the tourism brand, the BTB regulates the area. And in terms of traffic management, support, coordination, the city council is responsible. So this task force has been working together for about a year and a half now to try to put forward recommendations that would improve the flow of traffic, the management, the control, the security in the Fort George Tourism area. And they put together a very nice plan and they released a plan for public input. And the consultation was very, very dynamic. People had very widely divergent views in relation to what to do in the area, how the flows of traffic and buses and so forth affect them. And I think the consultation was very useful to get us to see how decisions can impact people. And I remember several very powerful reflections in the session itself, where people were saying you haven't adequately looked at the overnight tourism sector, you haven't adequately addressed concerns for people who live in the community. So what the task force is doing is that they're taking all of that input and then they will make some substantial changes with respect to their proposal and then they'll go back again.
Now, the aim is to be able to alleviate the congestion that we see near the city council and of course, at the other terminal. However, we've heard from the tour guys already that they're concerned if the pickup locations are moved to the Fort George, the Memorial Park, I'm sorry, it boxes them out of certain business. And of course, they'll always have concerns. People tend to be resistant to change. How do you balance not affecting the income of some of these independent operators that function outside of the terminal?
Well, I think you balance it by listening. And I think that we have had a very good pattern over the last, I would say, two years with respect to this. So that these consultations, we take them very seriously. It may be that we don't have them often enough. But when we make our plans, of course, it has to be informed by the technical experts, the traffic manager, the various people who understand flows and so forth, will make their recommendation. But people have to be able to engage with the plan and know that their decisions are powerful and impactful. For example, I had a particular person who you will know quite well, who commented that, well, in the morning, they just can't get their vehicle out of their yard simply because by 6:30, the area is taken up by tour operators. That's something that affects you directly because it affects your quality of life. You had complaints about smog, the smoke that comes out of the vehicles and the buses. And if you're having more vehicles in there, that affects somebody if you're walking on the street. We always talk about the pedestrianization of the tourism and the historic areas. This goes anathema to that. And what we want to do is, we want to come up with a plan, but we want to make sure that it's workable. I think the idea of having the buses park beyond Memorial Park is a very good idea because you're utilizing the park. One of the difficulties is that people always complain, well, the park is a white elephant. It's a white elephant because of very specific planning reasons. No vendor will go in the park if the sale is right in front of the gate. If the buses park right in front of the gate, I want to be where the action is. So it's a very specific thing. By allowing the entry and exit point to be beyond the park, you're encouraging tourists to walk more in the Fort George area and you're encouraging them to go through the park and hopefully, more people will get involved. That's the kind of general thinking, but of course, it has to be backed by the public consultation.
Absolutely. Now, of course, when you mentioned the Memorial Park, we've had this conversation so many times. From the point of the renovation, there were questions as to whether or not it was going to be feasible to have the businesses move in that area. And there have been several attempts to do so, failed attempts to do so. What makes you feel that this time is going to be different?
Well, I would want to mention like a greater point. And this is a thing which I think is a caution for planners and policymakers and politicians. That I said this because somebody asked about the Memorial Park before. Every project has to be a people project. We tend to think that a project that's done is an infrastructure project and building Memorial Park and building the civic center and building the municipal airport. You have to really begin with the engagement and the people component and the economic planning and policies from the very onset. Because when the thing is finished, it's very difficult sometimes to put those things in place. I use the example of BTL Park. From the very inception of the park, we engaged with members of the community, the vendors. They even picked the color of their boot, the size of the boot, where I want outlets to be in the park. And that kind of system is better because when the thing is finished, you're not trying to incorporate the people systems and to try to figure out, well, how does a vendor work with this existing space? How do we ensure that people use or walk through the park? All of that is part of the developmental process. Having said that, we have had very good experiences. There's an anchor tenant now in Memorial Park. There are several other people who are very interested in setting up businesses. We have gotten at least five major proposals from institutional entities within Belize City. But the thinking that I have and how I approach it is that we want to promote small business in that area. You want one or two at most anchor tenants. But you want to make it available for smaller people, hair braiders, small vendors, because you want them to come up in terms of the economic opportunity. Larger anchor type operations can use any other space in Belize City. I believe that the park and the area surrounding the park, while you do want these anchors to be that stable so that people will go there, but they will also pass by the small vendors, you want to encourage as much small vendors as possible because that means jobs and sustainability for all.
Is the route we're going at this point blocking businesses from setting up in front of the terminal so that they have to use the Memorial Park as an alternative?
Well, I think that when we say the word blocking, we want to stay away from that. I think that the general plan, and this is why we're having the consultation, nobody has been moved in respect to where they are. We want to sell a certain vision in relation to how the park can operate more effectively. So that if you reroute the passage of the buses, and I'm saying this very loosely because you have to accommodate residents' concerns, you have to accommodate Fort George and Chateau. So that's not finalized. But if you reroute it so that the tourists are not congregating in front of the gate, that they have to walk through the park and there's more of a flow, then what you're doing is that you're opening up more opportunity. The people want to be in front of the gate because that's where the tourist is. If the tourist moves to somewhere else, and a big concern here is the issue of security. We have to make sure that we're satisfying concerns with respect to citizen's security in the area. But if you have that greater walk, you have more opportunity for tourists to stop and spend a hundred dollars, spend fifty dollars, engage more with the residents, take in the culture, take in the food, and it's better for everyone. But again, that's something that we need to get people to buy into and to own. It's not anything that will be forced on people and we've been very deliberate about that.
And this is also not exclusively a city council undertaking because we know the Belize Tourism Board is also very much involved because we have seen where Belize City has been consistently lacking in terms of the cruise passengers experience.
Well, I think that this is an opportunity that we have failed. And I think that this is a great opportunity. You would see that the improvement, so to speak, that we have done along the waterfront, that's a strategic area. I will give a shout out to my predecessors in the PUP under the city council because they had a metro vision plan. And that was a precursor to some of the master plan and some of the waterfront visioning that we're seeing. The problem that I have is that the zone is a very concentrated area. You're trying to fit buses and taxis and vendors in a very small area, but the vision could be wider. The vision could be that you have a tourism zone or waterfront from St. John's College all the way up to the proposed cruise sport in the Port Loyola area. So that you're expanding the entire area of opportunity for people, primarily small vendors within your municipality. And if that area is widened, then that's more, you're expanding the pie. This is one of the reasons why we did the Belize sign along Seashore Drive. You're actually creating an experience. We built BTL Park, you're creating a widening experience. Battlefield Park because you're trying to get from the concept of a zone with defined boundaries to an expanded waterfront experience.
Of recent, we've seen where the issue of zoning has become a priority for you. You moved from the infrastructure focus that we had seen to now trying to organize a city that never had any organization. And it comes with resistance. You know, residential areas that were at one point without zoning residential are no longer exclusively that way. We see businesses of all kinds popping up all over the city. We see warehouses popping up in areas that you wouldn't expect. Now, that process in itself has been one where I know you're undertaking several consultations. What is your vision? I mean, you can't undo what has been done. But how do you move forward in terms of getting city residents engaged on the concept of zoning and also ensuring that you minimize the type of congestion that we always use Sixth Street as an example? You minimize the effects of these disorganized centers over the city?
Let me just start with the vision. The long-term vision is that Belize City would develop around two major economic clusters. So that we would have a historic waterfront and tourism zone which would stretch from St. John's College all the way to Port Loyola. And that area would be developed with a significant amount of improvement in infrastructure. You're seeing it with the parks and the different activities. And that's all coming together. And then you would have the central business district for Belize City which would incorporate the Philip Gosson Highway, Chatham Mall Street and the Lake Independence Boulevard, and then the George Parish Highway. So that that area is very significant because it incorporates the area of Lake Independence and Gonggolong. And when you're seeing that come up, you're seeing a major economic opportunity for people who traditionally have been marginalized, the so-called South Side Element. And then you're incorporating also Central American Boulevard. That's what the master plan talks about. And what we would do is that we would zone the city around those two major economic centers. The idea of zoning is something that by necessity has to have resistance. It has to be confrontational in a sense. It has to incorporate divergent ideas because you're talking about property rights. You're talking about quality of life issues. And we want it to be confrontational in a way because that's the democracy at work. So that when we have these public consultations, we've had them in Palm Grove Estate, Caribbean Shores. We've had them in various parts of the city to really engage people in what is it that we want in terms of zoning. So that we're not there where we can zone the entire city because the city's landscape is not there. But through the Inter-American Development Bank, they gave us a very powerful land use policy where we have identified eight land categories in Belize City. And it gave us a lot of insight. For example, we think that Belize City is saturated with land. But they showed us that 55% of land and lots in Belize City is unused. Half of the city is unused. So that they came up with a categorization that has to do with unused undeveloped land, and that's the majority. So that we are speaking about this in a very comprehensive way, but we're moving slow and deliberate because you need the citizenry to come on board. And we're also incorporating multiple things. For example, we've recently talked a lot about trade license reform. And what we have done or what we want to do in our very larger area is have the trade license fees based on zones. We can't do that yet because we don't have the zones. We're only at the very initial stages. But say, for example, you live in a residential area and somebody wants to put a nightclub in your area. What I will do is that I will tax the hell out of them. Your trade license fee will be a hundred thousand dollars. So that you will never localize a undesirable business in there. You're using tax policy to direct behavior. Right now, what we do is that it's just very organic. Wherever you go, you will...
No matter your location.
No matter. And it's reversed because the more business-centric areas pay the higher rates. Whereas if I want people to go in those areas, it should have lower rates. One of the things that we're seeing is that we would, we are experimenting with making the Albert and the Regent Street area, the downtown area, a trade license free zone. So that you're encouraging the redevelopment of downtown Belize City with certain traditional businesses. But all of these conversations are going on. It's unfortunate that we can't get more engagement when we have a public consultation. We have 50, 100 people. But this city has 67,000 people. We want to engage more people because there are a lot of things and discussions carrying on. But when people see a building in there, they wonder, well, why is that going up? Who made that decision? But we do have these engagements and the policy of decision-making by participation. And we're following the master plan. So that it's not that we're making this up as we go along. We're following a plan. Of course, it has to be flexible because things change. And then we're trying to see as much as possible if we can engage with people.
And I want to move on now to the Yabra development. I know you had an American group come down to help you to do the assessment as to what can be done in the area. What phase are you with that?
Well, this is, this was done again through tremendous support with the Inter-American Development Bank. And it's not only that project, but they were supporting us with respect to the city branding initiative. They brought down a consultant and we had a very nice brand. The idea with the Yabra development is that they came, they gave us a report in relation to what kinds of infrastructure and opportunities can be in there. Of course, it would centralize around the Yabra field in terms of developing that into a public recreational area. Incorporating the cemetery. And I know when we talk about the cemetery, it's very tense and controversial.
It's a historic site.
People guard that degree of solemnity and rightly so. But what they were proposing is that you, it's very underutilized. It's a historic site, but what does that mean? People walk past it, they sometimes they pee on the graves, they go and then they throw garbage in there. So that how can we show reverence to this area that we say that we respect so much? Because there, of course, is a demand for more housing. If we don't utilize those areas quite adequately, maybe sometime in the future, like what has happened before, they take in the cemetery space. So that what they were proposing is that there are ways that you can incorporate that entire area into a park, focusing on the graveyard, but making it very accessible, having more trees, for example. Taking down the fence so that you can walk through the area, having paths or benches or things like that. Or even having explanatory notes because there are very prominent Belizeans who are buried in that cemetery, but Belizeans don't know about it.
Or even the vaults that are up more on Caesar Ridge.
Yeah, and actually, a lot of people don't know about that. But you can have, you can have an area that you highlight. But one of the things that I want to point out is that you can see that the city is expanding along the waterfront. We're not where we want to be in terms of the movement with respect to Yabra, but we are expanding the development. Originally, of course, there's a lot of emphasis on BTL Park and Battlefield Park. But you're expanding that into Seashore Drive, you're expanding that into Yabra. And hopefully, we can jump the bridge. Another idea that we have very much in the initial phase is that we want to bring back like Brighton Beach and Old College. There are areas of Belize City where you can have a viable beach. I know that this is something that the previous mayor talked about, but the idea is, how do we develop the waterfront? Belize City has a lot of water. And it's a shame that we don't utilize it to the level that we can.
Now, I want to touch on one more thing before we move into 12 Days of Charity because I know it's still one of the areas we still haven't been able to address as yet. And that's the parking in the downtown area. As we speak about developing these areas, we know, you've said many times that it's time for investors to come in and establish perhaps a parking facility because of the challenges that people face downtown. What's the plan when it comes to being able? I mean, since the restructuring, I should say, of downtown, especially how the cars flow, blocking off especially that passageway by Mule Park, there have been issues when it comes to parking. So let's look at that one.
I think because of the blockage, there has been a significant improvement. Because one of the concerns or one of the things that I've heard about is that you're widening the loop in terms of downtown, which was the original vision. So that a lot more people, rightly or wrongly so, have to drive further in the downtown.
Happily or not so happily?
I would say happily, but a bit gassed people would say.
It depends on where we need to go and how quickly.
You're expanding the flow so that as opposed to people staying in the area of downtown by Heritage Bank, you're actually going all the way up to Wesley and so forth. That creates a greater sense of security because there's more presence in particular areas. You're going down to those downtown stores which are further along Albert Street. I've seen a tremendous number of them reopen or have a degree of resurgence because of the increased flow of people. One of the things that we're doing right now is that we're doing the, we're cementing the street in front of publics. Huge concern, major backlash in relation to people wanting that to be done for a long time. We're doing that because again, you want to expand the downtown. But long-term, what we're seeing is that why are you trying to fit a square peg in a circular hole? The downtown has limited planning opportunities from before. So that what we're saying is that you will always have the downtown being an area that has certain traditional businesses in Belize City. It is the largest concentration of colonial homes. It has some of the most important historical artifacts in the city, St. John's Cathedral, the Government House, the cemetery. So that that will always be a staple. But for large stores, for larger type of businesses, we're actually encouraging them to move along the Northern Highway because it's better. And you would have heard me talk previously. I mean, it's going to be upgraded, but not in the way that we would have envisioned. But the four-lane highway, so to speak, on the Northern Highway. Imagine if you have a huge amount of business activity along the Northern Highway and you have this very nice, you're building a city of the future today. And if you look at some of the buildings that are being built along the Northern Highway, I see between where you have Horizon and there's a third large building in there. You have Bravo that's built. So that you have many investment opportunities that are going there. The city needs to provide the infrastructure.
Back to the parking downtown.
No, but the idea with the parking is that you will have a significant, we are having and we still have as a matter of the plan to build a multi-story parking facility. But what I'm saying is that let's not try to fix a problem with additional problem. We want a vibrant downtown. This is why we're talking about the commercial center and the city staying downtown. But the reality is that, and this is something that we need to talk about, the downtown needs to be a pedestrian area. If I had my way, I would shut off the downtown to the entire flow of traffic. I can't do that. That would be very dangerous. But you have an experience in the downtown which is like nothing that I've ever seen elsewhere in the world. You walk on Orange Street. That's a major cultural experience for people. The stores, the Chinese restaurants, you have some bars along there. You see the confluence of people and activity and energy. That's an experience that one can have by walking. When you're driving in your vehicle, first of all, it's bad for your health. And secondly, we're trying to fit something that isn't really working. I think again, I just want to add very quickly in terms of the downtown, part of the plan is the incorporation of parking meters. And that's something that the residents in the downtown have put forward together with the business. Not necessarily as an income generator because we, the city, would benefit from the income, of course, but as a regulator of parking. Because what you have is that people who work in the downtown go and they park from 7:30 to 5:30 in the evening and then they dispel the opportunity for somebody who wants to do short-term parking.
To stop in and do some business. All right, very quickly now, we got to transition into your 12 Days of Charity, which is why you're here.
Yes, yes.
But I don't like to miss the opportunity to get updates on other issues. So let's talk about the 12 Days of Charity.
Well, the 12 Days of Charity is an idea that was birthed out of the city council's general philosophy that we could do things that promote healthy values within the city. This is like the labor for Belize. You're laboring for Belize, you're working to build your community. So the idea of the 12 Days of Charity is that during the Christmas season, the city council and many other people or businesses or private sector entities have a lot of social outreach programs. Or we may talk about sales or we may talk about spending or so forth. But there's an opportunity for us to really celebrate the meaning of the Christmas. So that what we are trying to do is that we're trying to promote 12 Days of Service and Community Activities. And we're focusing on the 12 working days between the 1st of December and the 16th of December. And what the city council will be doing, for each day, we've identified a community service activity. We routinely do community service activities, but the concentration of it, we want to send a message that the Christmas season and the entire year for that matter is an opportunity for us to be a blessing and to be an aid and a help on other people in our society. Ideas of civility, charity, community spirit, helping one another. These are things that we should really focus on during the Christmas season.
Have you identified your community service?
Yes, and so how we're doing it is that we've identified, what we're doing is that each area of the city council will be tasked with a specific project. So that we're breaking it up based on departments. So that the office of the mayor, we will be responsible for engaging with the people from the Sisters Cecilia's home. We're going to go there, this is going to be the first day. We're going to have lunch with them, have music and engage them, spend time with them and so forth. We have activities where our sanitation department will fix five homes. They're going to paint the house, they're going to clean up the yard, they're going to do engagement like that. We have, we're already collecting bags and books and so forth where one day, we're going to invite young people and we're just going to give them school supplies for the upcoming Christmas season. We're going to walk around the downtown area and we're just going to give food to the homeless. So that it's activities which are very small. Many times, people will criticize them as just being token activities, but you can in a symbolic gesture show that you're trying to promote a good spirit within the city.
Now, is this only for city council and the workers there? Or are you also encouraging the public to be able to join in?
It's only for the city council workers in relation to our planning. But we're also encouraging people because we want it to be something that takes off. We're very pleased with the support that we've been given by the private sector and educational institutions for Labor for Belize. That's something that traditionally, we have 800 people out throughout the city doing service and cleaning. And so we would want this 12 Days of Charity to be something where every business or every private sector, even an individual realizes that even if I give my neighbor food or if I do something to help somebody else, that could be a blessing to others and it could be something good. One of the things that we're doing even in our own family is that I'm encouraging my son to give away some of his lightly-used toys. So there'll be a weekend in the near future where he's going to clean up his toys and he's going to select the ones that we're going to give away. And we're incorporating that as just part of the program because there are many ways that we can show that we can help others within our community, which is not expensive.
Any unique community service ideas that you'll be implementing in your 12 Days of Charity?
Well, I think a lot of the focus will be on helping people who were hardest hit by Hurricane Earl or the recent spate of fires. So that we've had that be a concern. And so we're trying to target those people who are most in need within our community. So that there's not any novel projects or ideas, but we try to, we try to put our resources to where we see an evident need within the community.
Now, why is this an initiative that you feel that the city council needs to undertake at this time?
Because we have a lot of, I think, problems in the city. One of the things that is concerning me and we've responded by we're having a, we're having a peace rally because of the recent spate in crime. And I think that there is multiple approaches that we can take to solve crime. Of course, we do a lot of work to support the police and the good work that the police are doing. I think that they're very proactive and they're open-minded in their policing efforts. We are working quite assiduously with the other stakeholders to create economic opportunities, jobs and so forth. So that you can give somebody an opportunity for empowerment. But I think these projects likewise, when you have, it's not the solution, but it is a way that would let people see that it is my responsibility. When there is a crime activity, that person who is the person who perpetrated the crime, that person has a story and that person has a life walk and something happened along the way or a series of activities happened along the way that made that person into what that person is. So that what we're saying is that even in a token way, because many times, we only can do that. But even in a token way, we can do things that show that we have regard for our fellow man. We're not just the driving our AC vehicle and we're just going to work and doing our daily chores, so to speak. But we're thinking about other people and I think that that has to be part of the conversation. How is it that we as a society can begin to raise awareness in relation to how do we treat people who are impoverished within our community? How do we treat people who are, who don't have? I'm very fortunate during the Christmas season, I can travel. My entire family is going away. But there are many people in our society who won't have a Christmas. And that contributes to the level of frustration within our community. And it must be part of the conversation that those who have been blessed must give or must contribute in a meaningful and substantial way to those who have less within our community.
All right, well, we will look out for those activities. As you pointed out, it starts on December 1st. It's between December 1st and December 16th.
It's the 12 working days, including the 1st and including the 16th. It's the twelve working days, including the first and including the sixteen.
Okay. Well, thank you for joining us and providing updates on the different projects that are ongoing and of course, telling us all about the twelve days of charity. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and take a break. When we come back, we'll be speaking to the Belize Chamber of Commerce and Industry and a couple of its members about the Christmas Expo Extravaganza, as we say.